The Lodge, Lumba, White Circle, Tiburon, Mexico, eighty-three five zero. If you'll join me in the pleasure of leaving, please.
Regulations to the flag of the United States. To the Republic which has one nation under their own indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The salute to the flag of Mexico. I salute the flag of Mexico. It is the essential perfect friendship among united cultures. Call call. President is Director Jesse Duckett. Chairman Dave Crewie. Vice Chairman Ed Harstie. Absent is Alan Bermanster. We need an approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
A second. We have a motion and a second all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving forward. Manus report is nonexistent. Treasurers report. Okay, our balances right now are in our FNS savings account, we have fifty thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. In our operational account, that's where we run our checks from, we have seventeen thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents. In our restrict restrictive reserve, that'd be the one we control, would be eighty-six thousand one hundred and two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Standby savings account, we have eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. We have another savings account, which people have called it just about everything, but I'm gonna call it the unknown account until we can track it down. But it has four thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. The USDA emergency fund is at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand fifty-four dollars and two cents. And the USDA pass-through account is at seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Now, what we do is transfers, that's what we have on the agenda for today. But we also need to remember that this USG USDA pass-through account is not high enough. It needs to be at least eight hundred and sixty in order for them to get their payment. It's the level. Okay, and are there any questions on the numbers, finances, treasures? Okay, thank you, Jesse. Appreciate those numbers. Moving on, old business discussed, approved transfer FNS and standby funds to the general fund, make payment to Rody Law Firm. And. Additional computer software, correct?
I think most of the computer software, well, computer software, yeah.
We already made a motion on that previously to move forward with the purchase.
I, I, I know, John, I'm not a computer guy. You said software, I'm thinking salary.
Building software.
Building software that we approved, right.
We did get an email back from them, everything's a go. They've got all the initial download stuff that we have to download and print before. It's got all the instructions and step-by-step of what we gotta do before the actual download.
Okay, and as far as payment, when you showed me, you look like fifteen, the neighborhood fifteen thousand for the software, three thousand for the add-ons, the.
All of one-time fees to get set up, yeah, so it's eighteen thousand right now, that's total, and that's just a one, most of that's the one-time. It should be just the flat fifteen after that.
Does that include the archives?
That's every, that's the full transition.
What we're having to do is we're having to go back and, this software is forty years old. So, everything that's in there, we're gonna have to archive. And we can run it on a standalone computer, so if we need to go back and check, we can. So, it's pretty important that we get that archived, in fact, probably your old computer can be used for archive.
We were just telling them that that specific computer needs to be archived for the memory of the accounts.
Okay.
So, we're looking at about eighteen thousand dollars that we're gonna need.
Correct, yes.
And then we should be free to clear all that for at least a little while.
For a whole year.
And Rody Law Firm.
Okay, let me. Yes. Recently, if we're talking Samantha Holtz from the Rody Law Firm, recharge. So, we can get the old, she got us, there was a couple of outstanding cases that we could. One of them, an attorney can file a motion to remove us from. Because we've got, there's no reason for us to be involved in the purview of that. And, so, at a later meeting, I'll be asking for additional money to pay a retainer to our local attorney to do that. If you remove us from that, and the other one is. Just complaining about FNS, and we're thinking that we can probably reach a deal like we did with Cleveland. And just make it go away, might even, might not even cost us anything. Anyway, to get back to, we were talking to the attorney, I promised her I'll keep in touch and let her know what we're doing. The next invoice that I wanted to pay, because I'm paying the oldest ones first, and so we're up to April thirty for twenty twenty-four, we had an invoice of thirty-five thousand three dollars and ninety-six cents.
That's it.
That's the total for the invoice.
This is one invoice?
This is one invoice.
Yes, sir.
I know, y'all don't like this any better than we, what caused all this? Well, we had to use our FNS, which is supposed to pay for mechanical maintenance.
You're talking about the attorney fees?
Yeah, why don't we pay an amount of FNS?
In my humble opinion, and I'm gonna have to speak vaguely, my humble opinion of lawyers were extremely over by previous board members.
And, okay, well, I, I, I think I know what you're asking. And I had been using, you know, prior, I was using a lot of the FNS money to pay them. Because we got a demand letter from them, and. I really don't think anybody wants a law firm down here getting into our business and causing trouble, of course, which is kind of what they said we was gonna do if we didn't pay up. Because we owed them a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and they hadn't been paid in a while. I thought that was an error because I had signed two checks, then the checks, about, totally about seventy thousand dollars to that law firm. Back in spring and summer this year. And I got ahold of them, and they, they acknowledged that they got that money, but it was for previous invoices. So, people here in the office were just calling the lawyers day and night and buying them up, and they were happy to oblige because they're, they're working by the minute, you know, so, three hundred dollars an hour, something two fifteen an hour.
We've had legal bills over the last few years, approaching three hundred.
So, my thinking is, we've got, we've got money in some of these other accounts, granted, FNS is supposed to be used for some of these and for low grade and things like that. But, until we get out from under this crushing debt with the law firm. I think, my opinion is, we need to set aside the low grade and some other non-essential things that we can, just to get that debt paid off, and which we will have. Well, this, this. Invoice that I want to pay down is thirty-five thousand, and there's one waiting in the wings for fifty-four thousand. So, we're still looking at about eighty-four, eighty-five thousand dollars. But, if I, if I can pay this one down, that would be the one for fifty-four, seven ninety-one. And I'm sure that I can talk her into accepting two separate payments for that.
I had no idea we had legal bills like this pending until two weeks before my resignation, when Rene Hamilton received a demand invoice from Rody. Before that time, we had no clue that we owed anybody. As far as legal bills. We have one signed retainer on these large cases, we both have signed retainers. And all we can find now is one signed, we've signed retainers, so, somebody who's signing retainers on these things, we, we do know who. But it was without consulting the board. They were running on their own.
If that wasn't decided by the board, then why is, why is T W S liable and not that person?
Good question. We, 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 we've tried to figure out the pathway. Hall room is, and of course, the only thing that's that Ed deals and I deal too, that we can pay this and put it behind us. Or we can try to find those that are responsible and bring litigation gets in, which has got to cost us more money. And so, you know, this could be a constant loop of lawyer bills for us. And, and Ed is already negotiator of the small settlement of twenty-eight hundred dollars, that we paid out over ten thousand dollars in legal bills on. How does that make sense? And so, when these things come, these legal matters come up, I think it's a consensus that we're, we will try to settle these situations. Instead of getting a legal firm involved right out of the get-go. I think it was seen as a, as a power move to get a lawyer thrown on it, scare people, and, well, that doesn't work when it comes to court system. Because if they get lawyers, some of these people, most of them, the person involved in most cases was representing himself, so he didn't have any cost out of pocket. There was cost, that's ten to thousands of dollars.
Right now, y'all are, they'll stop all that crap that happened.
Absolutely, and especially since we've got a great treasurer. Absolutely.
Going forward, because we talked about it, and I, I think, I think I'm pretty confident that Justin and Dave both would agree. Once we get this paid off, then we are going to make a conscious effort to get that money put back into FNS and standby where we took it from.
Yes, sir.
So, just, just a curiosity thing, or anything else? Well, no, it's a little more than that. Is there any way with, with detailed bills to tease out these legal matters, what might be construed as FNS-type things? And what might can be construed as water-type things? So, we're not just killing FNS to pay these off, which, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just trying to figure out.
The bottom line is, we're killing everything. It's just not FNS, we're having to rob money from Tom, Dick and Harry to get these things paid. Until we get this lawyer bill paid, they won't represent us anymore, we're banned, we don't want them to represent us anymore. But until we get this paid, we've got a, a black cloud hanging over our finances. Once we get this paid, we'll start seeing significant increases in our bank accounts. But, you know, we're doing the same thing people would do with their personal finances. You have something hanging over your head, you put your, put your shoulder to it, go to work and get it paid off. It's unfortunate, these lawyer bills are costing us, the recipients from a hundred water subscribers for a period of eighteen months, going to pay you losses. So, the increase we saw in our water revenues in this last debacle haven't done us anything at all. And some of this, a lot of this, could be involved with that. Probably costs a hundred thousand dollars in legal bills to deal with the PRC on water increases. And my thinking, and I think a lot of other people are, instead of paying lawyers a hundred thousand, why don't we not go for the water increase and just keep our water bills standing?
It was something else that I came up with when I was talking to the PRC. Because these people can, can file a complaint with PRC, you guys probably already know this. And if it's at least a bit justified, you know, they're gonna take it and run with it. But they require us to have a return. And because I was trying to deal with all this, I got a kind of a nasty letter from one of the people at PRC saying, you know, what the rules are. And I said, you don't understand our situation, you know, we were drowning here, and we, we trying our best to get out of this. So, they finally related and said, well, if you'll, if you'll say please and get on the news and whatnot, I will bring this one time, the waiver to not have an attorney. And this is, this is for one that we settled already, just between the two parties. But if anybody else files a complaint, you know, we have to, we have to have a hired attorney just to answer it. So, it's, it's not fair, I don't, I don't like it, that's just the realism. So.
So, if somebody here in the district files with PRC, then you have to hire an attorney.
Yes, that's, that's the rule.
Do we need to let everybody know that here?
Well, we have spent up to.
Said I'm afraid to.
On one take, I know we spent up twenty-eight thousand dollars fighting a complaint by a local resident. But you did nobody any good.
As long as complaints show us that, they, they probably have at least a little bit of merit. And, and I would rather, I would rather just settle and say, hey, you've got a legitimate complaint, don't worry, you know, you know, wholeheartedly, but. We can, we can settle this between us, and we don't have to hire attorneys, we don't have to go to PRC.
That's what I was getting at, but everybody don't bring it to the board.
Exactly. Hopefully, we can fight civil ground and get it resolved.
Exactly.
Yeah, but they have to talk about it.
Well, they haven't let one of us do it. You know, I do have a problem.
And they can always come to the office, they can.
Jessica.
Yeah, anybody can come to the office as long as we're open and ask questions, or, you know, you can ask questions that I, you know, we could even get you an answer if I don't have it. But, yeah, I mean, as long as we're open, we should be able to get you some answers.
But they have to be civil about it, because we don't, you know, it's a severe man.
We had a current situation, somebody stealing water repeatedly, pulling the meter and putting a line in or replacing me and blah, blah, blah. Not stealing, the meter was with them, so they made a temporary line like that. They contacted governor's, said, well, they have a medical excuse, they need water, oh, we're good with that. Bring us a letter from your doctor saying that you have a medical situation, you have to have water, you can't afford to pay for it. This particular person will not present us with a letter, but you have got the governor's office involved. They don't want to do the work to tell us what's the matter. And the consensus in, with a lot of people, that there's nothing wrong with this person, they just want a free water bill. So, I mean, we've got that, little stuff going on. It's silly, so. And when you hurt the water department, you're hurting the entire community.
Any questions about legal bills?
Just so everybody, everybody knows, we haven't found them all yet, all the invoices.
That's great to know.
So, you know, we like to have them all in one stack, so we can just go through them day by day and find out what the previous people were, were actually doing with the returns. But we don't even know that.
Samantha Hunt can't prove something.
Well, she can, did you ask her last time?
Did not.
Well, I guess you could.
Money charges.
Yeah, charges, thousand bucks.
That's why I'm asking.
That's what I'm bringing with you.
We got the thirty-minute phone call free, and I want to start adding on.
Yeah, accessories.
Okay, on this moving money around, what do we want to move with it now?
Well, I have a suggestion.
Okay.
We have eighty-six thousand and.
And restricted?
And restricted.
Right.
That, written along, sent me a list of, I guess these were minutes coming twenty sixteen to deal with that fund. And it looks like sometimes in the past, it did get into it when they were in a situation kind of like what we're in now. And that, that fund was, I guess it was funded by money we got from mains or properties?
Thirty percent.
No, no, by, by overdue standby fees.
Thirty percent.
You know, thirty percent of overdue standby fees.
Okay, not on mains, mains had nothing to do with it?
Well, kind of, if they, if they would pay off a loan, that would be an overdue account.
Okay, okay. So. I would, I would suggest that we move all the fifty thousand dollars out of that account, put it in the general operations account.
Oh, that would be part of the thirty-six thousand dollars?
Yes.
To be moved from restricted over to general, so we could pay. Pending right now, we, we have to pay for the computers because we put them on our credit card. We have to pay for the computer IT services. And we have to pay for Jessica's software. And then we have to pay our lawyer. So, those are the pending high-dollar bills that have to get paid within this next week. So, what, what's the total of those?
Okay, well.
I can kind of.
We, we can get a ballpark, eighteen thousand for building software.
We've got, we've got, well, I'm gonna round that out to twenty. Twelve thousand for computers and IT.
Then, that would include the first invoice from our IT guy.
And we're paying how much of the loan? How much do you want to pay?
Oh, I want to, I want, well, I want to see how much is left, because I, I want to take some out of FNS to add to that.
If we pay.
I wanted to pay them that thirty thousand dollars and.
Thirty-five is what I have.
Thirty-five thousand and. Thirty-five thousand and three dollars.
With her software. We're looking at about thirty K with software and IT. But the computers, we can't pay off on time.
Yeah, those are about seven thousand dollars we put on the, well, we, we, yeah, about seven thousand, a little more, we put on the credit card of the computers. And we can pay that down a thousand a month or.
How much is in FNS?
Fifty thousand, just a little bit, but.
Well, I, I see, yes, we take thirty-six thousand from the reserve account and make up the balance out of FNS, is that what we're thinking?
Yes.
Okay. So, so, if we pay them thirty and thirty, we're looking at about sixty thousand dollars. So, that would be taking twenty-four thousand out of FNS, thirty-six thousand out of. That work?
Well, it would have been nice, we would have mentioned on the agenda that we would be investing in restricted reserve.
I probably did.
We can move that to Saturday, if you want to move it to Saturday, we can move it to Saturday.
Why, why don't we just transfer forty thousand out of FNS and ten thousand out of standby?
You know, I'd do that in standby, then you.
It'd be down to one thousand something.
Yeah.
But with standby, you can't count on it anyway, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna rattle in a little slow, but it's not a paper standby, so.
So, what are you suggesting?
Ten thousand out of standby, which leaves us with about twelve hundred dollars in that account. And forty thousand out of FNS, which leaves us ten thousand. And FNS is still growing, so, but we don't know how much it's going to by next. And, and of course, this would be just like, this is a, we just gotta stop spending.
Well, yeah, you know.
But, but that'll give you fifty thousand, you can make a twenty, twenty thousand or twenty-five to Rody. You know, not, not the thirty-five, I don't think.
Thirty. Thirty, correct? Rody's thirty.
Thirty, thirty, thirty-five thousand and three dollars, yeah.
We can just make a little bit less than that, so we have plenty to finish up with all the computers and the tech guy and the.
Okay, yeah.
And, and that'll keep us going for right now, we, we already have, we still have seventeen thousand in the operational fund. But we don't know if that's a solid number, because some of the paychecks weren't that big cash.
Right, and we have payroll coming up.
We just went through payroll.
We, we have another.
We should have going, goes out this week?
Do we want to move?
Hoping Friday, maybe Monday, but yeah, it's, it's fixing to go out.
Did you discuss the reserve accounts? Okay, and put that on for Saturday morning?
Can we word it for you?
Move money from reserve, restricted reserve into general fund to pay bills. Especially to satisfy Rody's requirements. Rody's pretty firm that will pay these bills, and we're getting them in court again. We, we don't want to do that.
You want me to name every on this, or just satisfy the bills?
We just satisfy necessary bills.
You might want to sit in there somewhere to discuss status. Or, or to confirm or, or solidify status of restricted reserve. Because we're gonna have to use almost all of it when this is over. And we need to be able to do it, and, and we also need to be all in agreement that we need to pay it back when this is over.
Absolutely. Okay, for the interim period, we're moving.
Yeah, yeah, I got one.
Okay, for the interim period, we're going to move ten, ten thousand dollars from standby accounts into general. Which I know, our material tells not to, you know. And we're going to move forty thousand dollars from FNS into general to pay bills. And we need to pay our IT here in the next day or two.
The first invoice we need to pay.
Immediately.
Yeah, and we haven't gotten the second invoice yet.
Okay.
So, Jesse, what was it, item number one of the agenda? You just said it?
We can put it at the end, I don't remember, you're not that old.
I just wanted to know what it was.
It was to go over one of the funds, it was to go over one of the funds, one of the accounts.
One of the funds of figure.
Oh, it's the restricted. To remove money for the restricted reserve to general fund.
That was the.
Approved, discuss approved, remove, removal of funds from restricted reserve, placing them in the general fund.
I think he just wanted to keep an eye on the, the restrictive reserve, so that they discuss the total of where we're sitting.
Yeah, and, and I, I think I had added discuss, I'm not sure how you're gonna fit this all together, might put it to separate, uh, discuss the restrictive reserve and, and. And approve or disapprove, how to, how to change, you know, like it has to be paid back. And, you know, solidify the fact that it can, it can be used for, well, it, it happened, actually, that was, that wasn't right, you know, what Ricky Martin pulled up for you.
That was a resolution, though, how we have.
Yeah, the restricted reserve has to be used for water. I mean, there's, there's no, because it came from water. So.
But so did some of the legal bills. The legal bills are all water.
Yeah, but we don't know if we have found them all.
Well.
So, you have, you know, some of them did.
Uh-huh, some of them were. And discuss approved utilization of restricted reserve funds. Pay bills. Approve, discuss, repaying funds to the restricted reserve that are used in the interim period to pay bills.
Can we have a new restricted reserve?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we need a, we need a motion on moving this money around. Be the ten K from standby and forty K from that.
I'll, I'll make that motion, we, ten thousand from standby and forty thousand from FNS to general fund to pay.
Pressing bills. You got a motion?
I second, okay, we have a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. Now, she, now she keeps one for, for a little. Motion passes. Okay, new business, discuss approved minutes of September tenth, regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved, we approved the minutes of September tenth, regular meeting.
I second. We have a, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two, discuss approved minutes from September fourteenth, special meeting.
I approve, we approve the minutes as written, September fourteen, special meeting.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, item number three, discuss approved minutes of September twenty-fourth, regular meeting.
I approve the minutes as written from September twenty-fourth, regular meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, do we have any public comments or questions?
How are we planning on paying this money back?
How are we planning on paying this money back? It's nice to say we'll pay the money back, but if we don't have money now, how are we going to pay it back?
We had a water increase, which is helping us dramatically. And it's, it's a water, we had a water increase, which was just recently.
Right.
And that's going to help us dramatically. We're not seeing the effects of that because we sold, we're burning bills. As soon as we get Rhodey paid off, we'll start seeing our accounts soar. So, we're like any good housekeeper, house money manager, anybody else. You got a bill that you gotta pay, you gotta pay it, you gotta wait for funds to come in to renew your coffers, or our accounts in this case. With our new billing software, uh, Jessica, that generally works, countless hours doing that, it's gonna be reduced, probably about half at least, don't you think?
Oh, at least.
At least half with the new billing software. She's having to do every account from timber on one by one. The new software allows her to take all the accounts that are owned by one person and lump them all together. And they come out in common billing, rather than having to go over every account.
When are we getting it?
This week. It's gotta be done by October thirty-first, because our billing software goes dormant on the thirty-first of October. You cannot use it anymore. Any other questions?
Well, I'd like to add to that, uh, a- also our F and S and our standby fees. We normally collect a little bit more than we spend during the fiscal year. So we have carryovers, which is our cushion or, or a pillow, in case we're ready to, like, the well goes out or, you know, the financial difficulties, like what, what occurred here. Unfortunately, we came into this, uh, mess with, uh, what, about, about two hundred dollars in legal bills. And, and somebody has spent all of our cushion, there wasn't anything in F and S or standby, when it, with, with the last fiscal year or this fiscal year.
Did Renee buy that, did it all?
I don't think she has yet. I don't know.
It was approved.
It approved twice and then it was purchased.
Oh, is she gone?
Yes, she resigned last Monday, Monday a week ago. She came in the office and abruptly resigned. Some unusual things have been happening during the period. Yes, she was gone.
So, so those funds will, uh, gradually rise back up.
And absolutely, we want to be using F and S for what we see. We don't want to have to use F and S like this. We want to use it for road grading, uh, billing and proof. What are we needing on, on the F and S side? Uh, that's not water related. It's just unfortunate, we're just having to pull money from everywhere we can get these bills paid, which is.
It seems like we're getting this every month.
No, we, it hasn't been pretty much. No, as of recent, we, we didn't know we had oil or bills like this until three months. We had no clue. We had no clue these bills existed. No, we did not. We did not. We had no, somebody had been, I won't say hiding, but not disclosing these bills to the board or the team. These bills were stuffed somewhere, like a lot of other bills we found, that are stuffed in cabinets and drawers and stuff that have never been paid. The twenty-eight thousand on the doctor bill?
Yeah.
Never been paid. And it, it, the list goes on and on and on, stuff that has not been paid. That was just being stuffed indoors somewhere, and we're, we're going to the office.
Why is our money going out?
Excuse me?
If it's not being paid before you found these bills, we still didn't have any.
Well, we had a lot more money than we have now.
Yeah, we're not quite sure where, uh, how come the money was, was gone and the bills were still there.
That's a question.
And we haven't been able to get into all the, uh, uh, software yet to, uh, to do, do a good search, you know, just know that, we have no budget, there was no budget made for, for this fiscal. And, uh, and everything looks wrong when you look at it on paper, so we gotta figure out what's going on. But we also had a security issue in the, in the office and our computers changed over and, so we, we haven't been, been able to get to the accounts yet to do any good searches.
Before we can take any information on this, uh, on the computers that we removed from service, all that information has to be our. We have to have backup copies of all that information. Then we can hand all those computers over to Jesse. And he can go through all the computers and try to go back and reconstruct a financial picture of whether it makes sense or not, but we're gonna try to reconstruct a financial picture and find out what happened. Because nobody up here knows. We were all then being kept in the dark on all of it.
We're always in the dark, then somebody's always stealing the money, it's always.
Well, we don't know that. We, we don't know that. We, we can't speak on anything to Jesse. He's gonna have to do more or less a forensic, uh, investigation on the accounts. And see if we have any irregularities, for instance, in bank deposits. Were they really high one month and then they go down and then they're high and then, you know, we shouldn't have a flat line on our deposits, because we're taking in the same money virtually every month from our water suppliers. If we see an irregularity in those deposits, where, where did that money go? So, uh, we're not accusing anybody or not saying anything, we're just saying that we need to find out what happened in the past, and we can't without Jesse getting into all these computers and looking at all this information and trying to figure it out.
Probably not guilty then.
We don't know.
It's, it's gonna show somewhere, but, but, but it might not even be anything to show. It might have just been wasteful spending or, you know.
We have all the deposit slips, we have all the bank statements, and we have all the checks that were paid out.
We're showing the bank statements.
Yeah, we're showing the bank statements. We just ordered.
And what happened?
Here's three years of bank statement sitting in that envelope right there. That's where we start again. That'll give us a pretty good snapshot, or give Jesse a pretty good snapshot of kind of what we're having.
It sounds like he's gonna lock me in the conference room till September.
There's a mail slot in there, we can push.
We'll slide a tray under the door.
Uh, we've locked down the conference, uh, room for Jesse to use as his, uh, more or less his office away from the office. So he can lay everything out there and lock it up and walk away and go confident. When he walks back in that room, nobody's there. So we've got all the lock changed on the building this week. We rekeyed a lot of stuff, we've done a lot of stuff to improve security, just on people getting into the building.
Front key, the front door too?
Not the front door, not to the public area. We've done everything else, but not the public area. I mean, there's something they can do, and we are going to secure the back door from the kitchen into our conference room. So nobody can go through that door moving forward. So trying to tighten everything up right here. The new computer systems that are being put in are phenomenal. We have a hub, that hub records all the activities from, from all the computers simultaneously, all the time. And it's uploaded every twenty-four hours to the cloud. We have records we can access at any time on any computer. And our computers have to have a key to access our computers and a password, and the physical keys, that's an encrypted key that goes in the computer. That computer cannot be turned on until that encrypted key, which is only possessed by the user, uh, to, to be able to use that computer. Yes, sir, are you asking a question? Okay, you're just right, you're on, okay. So we've done a ton of security upgrades this last couple of weeks, we're gonna continue to move forward. We're putting some barriers, iron barriers up and stuff, so we know that offices are a hundred percent locked down and nobody can get in.
I know you have took the video cameras. I mean, I saw.
We didn't take them, some of them were stolen.
Well, I saw a guy in here removing.
Yes.
Has he gone through again?
We put up new cameras. We gotta get a budget for that, but I think, uh, to put in some new high-def, high-quality cameras that's in the eight hundred dollar ballpark, and we're gonna see what kind of money we have left after the IQ years. Uh, so we can move forward, but, uh, I think he suggested eight cameras. That would cover pretty much the entire building.
Did y'all go over the film or the videos that when we did have the cameras in?
There again, most of them weren't. And deleted. It only says about two weeks where they went. The new cameras can be viewed remotely, the new camera system will be able to be monitored and, and, uh, viewed remotely. And if there's a, we have all kinds of alarm set up on anything else. Anything moves in the office at night, send alarms.
What you're finding.
You did?
So what you're finding reveals, and then thieves have got into the office too.
Yes.
We have people hacking the email accounts and hacking accounts inside the booth. We found proof that people had backdoor access into our computer system. Remotely accessed.
Can you trace it?
And we stopped a hundred percent of that, and it just got rid of the computer experience, yeah. Yes, man.
The people we used to have, um, managing the computers, they, um, they are under criminal investigation? Is that, is that?
We can't, we can't even talk about.
Okay, I was, I was just wondering if that has.
There's, there's ongoing investigation.
Led, led over to us.
Can't disclose any record.
Yes.
So, um, I'd like to know if, if you, I know it's early, but do you have a plan or are you going against that for your question? Yes, in the works right now, we're, we have a special meeting Saturday night, eight in the, where we discuss that as well as your situation, with the bar. And we've got a lot of really important topics on Saturday morning that we just, we call it special meeting Saturday, because these are topics we just have to move on, like the water. Okay, any further remarks?
I've got something for you, Alan.
Okay, we need a, we need a motion to adjourn.
All right, make a motion, adjourn this meeting.
I'll say it's right. You have a motion and second to adjourn, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye, adjourn. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Water bills go out already?
No, because with the computers being out, I can't do it again.
The reason I was wondering is because people were dropping about their bills, and we hadn't gotten one so far.
Well, okay, so when I put everything off of our meter reader into my computer, when I transfer everything together, email bills go out as soon as I press. No, physical bills are gonna be Friday as soon as. Yeah, I tried to get them done last Thursday.
I like that. Cat mom. Yeah.
I know a lot of people are used to it, so they've been calling me all day, but yeah, I'm just with the computers.
I'm gonna be coming up by next week to work on the. I bought that shipping container up there that's, uh, and, uh, so I've got four horse stalls and I'm gonna put the shipping container here.
Uh-huh.
And then I have a quonset hut that's gonna be the top. Won't that be a good barn?
Very cool, yes.
So, you okay?
I think I owe you an apology.
For what?
Way back in February, are you the same person that was, that was, that had a dog? And I answered to it and I was gonna take it?
Yes.
Oh, that was a while back. Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, but it was just like a, like third party. It should be done.
To us, yeah. It, it, I just, it was such a, a cluster, you know what going on.
I know.
And then when I got home, it was even more, because I had, I had.